We want to welcome you to our Leavenworth City Commission Meeting. We ask that you turn off for silent cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 p.m. and also at midnight, also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. At this time, we'll have a proclamation. I'm excited to present the proclamation in celebration of Juneteenth. It's Joanna Schultz. On January the 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, freeing all persons held as slaves in the Confederate states. When Union troops entered Gabistin Bay, Texas on June 19, 1865, the enslaved Black people of Gabistin, Texas finally learned that they had been freed for two years. June 19th became the recognized day of celebration, called Juneteenth Freedom Day, by the formerly enslaved people of Gabistin, Texas. The newly freed people began to migrate to other parts of the country. They shared their celebration of Juneteenth in their new Black communities and the celebration has spread throughout our country. Juneteenth is a day of grave remembrance of a dark period in our nation's history. It is also a day of recognition of hope for the descendants of the Black people who survived enslavement. Our country continues to heal. The recognition of Juneteenth as a federal holiday renews the hope that our country promised of freedom and equality for all Americans can come true. The citizens of Leavenworth, Kansas were gathered on June 17, 2023 to celebrate Juneteenth with a parade and festival because sharing traditions with fellow community members creates strong bonds that transcends differences. I, Jermaine Wilson, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby congratulate and recognize 2023 celebration of Juneteenth.
Good evening, Commissioners, fellow citizens here and in our city. I want to thank you so much for this proclamation. We are so looking forward to this year's celebration. We want to thank you all for your support. We had so much strong support this year from the city and we hope to make this the largest Juneteenth celebration in northeast Kansas. So stick with us, we're getting going and we're gonna keep it going. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. If there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from May 23, 2023, regular meeting.
Second?
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance number 8217, acquisition of land or interest by condemnation in connection with US 73 Choctaw to Seneca Improvement Project.
This is the condemnation process that the city needs to start to be able to award or let the bids for the 4th and Street reconstruction. And Brian Post, our Public Works Director, will give an update of sort of where we are right now.
We had a total of 24 easements that were needed. We received five easements before we did the resolution back in May. We have an agreement in principle on seven more that we should likely not have to go to condemnation on. There's also two for the US Post Office, which we cannot condemn. We're just working through that process. And so there's 10 easements for one property owner that has multiple tracts that we're working through. But we do need to continue with the process in case we can't come to an agreement.
Any questions or comments?
No, I think so.
This requires a roll call, starting with Commissioner Leonhart.
Aye.
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 All right, vote passed, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance number 8218, Amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter 38, Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection and Disposal.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is just the action needed to remove the part of the language that required that the city deliver trash bags to residents. This is in effect for the polycart change. And again, just as a reminder, the week of July 10th is when the city will start delivering those, so we're less than 30 days away. So again, this is just the cleanup language to remove the requirement to deliver trash bags.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No.
This also requires a roll call, starting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Vote passes, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, new business, public comments. This is open to anyone that wish to address the commission. We ask that you keep comments limited to two to three minutes. We ask that you also address anything that is not on the agenda. Do we have any individuals that signed up?
We do, we have Dinah Zech.
Okay. Please come up to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Dinah Zech and my address is 1924 Pine Ridge Drive. Is that what you wanted?
Yes, ma'am.
Leavenworth, okay.
And I'm Stacy McCowen and my address is 500 Shawnee Street.
We're here today, thank you all for letting us speak. We're here today representing the Leavenworth County Historical Society. We have an event coming up on June the 24th, which is a week from Saturday, and it's gonna be at the Riverfront Community Center in the gymnasium. And the theme of the event is Buffalo Bill's Wild West. So we want everyone to come and dress in country gear. We've got a mechanical bull rented. Those of you who are so looking forward to that. And we've got a wonderful country western band and a fantastic chuck wagon dinner that includes brisket, fried chicken, ribs, corn on the cob.
Sounds like soul food.
Everything that you would think you'd have in a chuck wagon dinner. Plus four different kinds of desserts and homemade ice cream. So it's gonna be a fabulous event. The tickets are $50 and we have had a wonderful community support in our endeavors. We just want to spread the word and get those who aren't available, who haven't signed up, to go ahead and sign up and come. You can get tickets on our website or you can get tickets at the Historical Museum. So Stacy has a few words.
Yes, and I might add that our mayor Jermaine Wilson is the emcee for the evening.
Pre-same?
All right, so I'm gonna read some words from Mary Ann Socksey Brown, who was the president of the Historic Society for many, many years. So she just wanted to convey the two big reasons for this benefit. One is the Leavenworth County Historical Society is unsupported by tax dollars and although we have been collecting and preserving our history for nearly 70 years, we are a nonprofit and must raise funds to operate our museum and continue our mission. Two, the unique, rich history Leavenworth has is a key to tourism here. Therefore, it is important to keep this history alive as a community, working together to accomplish that. I think that Al Tarian, the first president of the Buffalo Bill Cody State Park Committee, said it best. Buffalo Bill Days is an attempt to recognize a vital part of the history of Leavenworth as well as to preserve a bit of America's past. We feel a great deal of pride for Leavenworth, the oldest city in Kansas, and we are happy to have a part of our past, the Cody family. We wish to convey to future generations the spirit of daring and adventure shared by many of our pioneer families. While past tributes have gone by the wayside after 2014, Leavenworth needs to be, needs to keep Buffalo Bill Cody at the forefront, not only as a state but national and internationally known figure. Perhaps the community can join us in such an event in the future and build upon the Leavenworth County Historic Society's recognition of Buffalo Bill in this fundraiser next Saturday.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, looking forward to it. Is there a high requirement on the mechanical bull? I'm all in.
They'll put it on mild.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Next item on the agenda, number five, review unsafe and dangerous structures given 60-day extension at April the 11th, 2023 meeting.
We have Julie Hurley and Bethany Falvey on the side.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, this is a review of the unsafe and dangerous structures that we looked at about 60 days ago that were given an extension by the commission to commence repair on the properties. And so Bethany Falvey will give an update on each of them.
So 612 North 2nd Street. I am showing you pictures from when we brought them to you in November, when they got put on the extension list in April and then current. So this is November, April. And then over the weekend, a new roof and windows were put in.
And on, and so we'll kind of do it like we did the last time. We'll talk about each one as we go through it. So I'm not sure if the owner of this one is here. I do know that a neighbor of the property is in attendance, though.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, TV. Hey, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I forgot. Sorry, go ahead. Nope, so this is just the update on that one. And so that would be for you all to discuss if you want to. So you've got a few options. You can continue to allow them to work on it. We can move forward with demolition if you don't feel like there's been sufficient progress. Or it can be removed from the list if you feel like enough progress has been made.
Okay, is the owner of the property, property in the audience?
No, but a neighbor.
Okay, would you like to come up and make any comments?
My name is Bob Luton and I live at 615 Norwood Esplanade. And this property is directly pretty much my backyard. It's looked really bad for about three years since I've lived there. And I do appreciate the new roof, but I don't think it's hardly improved. In the meantime, they built several new, really nice looking apartments right around there. And I can see that some of the people looking at those are kind of hesitant to rent them when they glance across the street and see this. And I do, like I said, appreciate the new roof, but I do feel like the absolute minimum was done. I did come to the last city council meeting where the metric discussed was to repair the windows, which they did put in three new windows. They're not new, they were obviously pulled off from some other property. And there's a space about this large where you could actually just get into the house. So they're not front end up at all, not sealed, animals can still get in there. On the front, you can probably see under that window, there's a large hole where animals can get into. And honestly, they showed up kind of one day, slapped in these three windows and called it good. The owner did say that he would maybe do something on the inside. Nothing's been done in there. The other metrics were siding, trim, foundation and porch. And none of those have been addressed at all that I can see. And additionally, on the backside of the house, there's two to three windows that are still missing. So it's definitely one of the worst properties up north and those are my comments.
Yep, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. How long has this property been vacant?
We have, they have lost water service in here. January 22.
So that's the date of the last water service, which is our closest estimation. It may have been unoccupied for longer than that, but that's kind of the most solid thing we have to go on.
And last communication from this owner was that?
We haven't had any since, we've had no communication.
And there's been no permits pulled either.
Yeah, I say, yeah, keep it on demolition. Move forward.
Just so you know, I mean, you have already, you have already declared this as suitable at one point for demolition. Not offer any more extensions on it, then this would be, the city would proceed with the actual demolition.
Okay.
You've already taken that step. And then as things came through, city staff brings things to you, just to give you an update to let you decide whether you want to keep it on or not. If you are not going to extend on anything, then the city would proceed with the actual demolition of this.
And just to be clear, the property owner was notified of everything that we had asked.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a question right now that, just putting what they put in it, it's still qualifies for demolition, right?
Correct, yes, they have not completed any of the items that were required.
Yeah, just put a couple of windows in it.
And that's the one.
Yeah, I drove by today and right on the corner there, they poured a new foundation. So something else is being built on the, right on the corner.
Right.
As the neighbor said, there's a couple of duplexes going up.
More, so that's new, it'll be next to that, yep.
So when was the last day of communication with the owner? Was the last time we had contact with them?
The ownership changed right before the April meeting. We haven't had any communication with the new owner.
Yep, they have been contacted.
Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium.
My name is Kevin List and I'm associated with Mr. Wesley that owns that property.
Okay.
And he's been out of town, I think, for five weeks or something like that. But he's working on that and probably knows in the next step is siding or whatever. But, you know, slow but sure.
Oh, so you're representing Mr. Wesley?
Well, I can't, he's a good friend.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, the communication we would need is for the owner to contact the city.
Well, he can get with you.
Well, yeah, he should.
He should have, yeah.
But he's been out of town.
And he was at the last meeting, Mr. Wesley was.
Yeah, and so just say if we did move forward with the demolition process and he did make the repairs, what does that look like?
So like Attorney Waters said, if the consensus is to keep it on the demolition list and allow city staff to move forward with that process, then we would start those steps that we need to take. So it's not an overnight type of thing. And so really, you're just, you're giving staff really the permission to move forward with that. Typically, what we'll do if, even if we kind of receive that from the commission, you know, we have permission to move forward. If someone is actively working on something and pulling permits, we still have the ability to use discretion in terms of what we do.
Okay.
Is Jerry in town now?
Yeah, he's supposed to be coming here today or tomorrow. And he's working on it.
Well, I'm comfortable with moving forward. And if he make the repairs, then we can use the staff discretion. Because it's not all about just tearing down the house. It's really.
And all worked out with no permits to this point.
Correct. Yeah, so anything that's been done, there haven't been any permits pulled.
Oh.
So.
So I would tell him to definitely contact the city as soon as possible, but I'm in favor of moving forward.
Yes. Okay, so then the commission would not see it back and then staff would move forward with it and work with the owner to see what that looks like.
Correct. And make sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
It shouldn't be removed from the list yet.
Okay, so we'll proceed.
Okay.
The next property is 710 South 7th Street. Here's November, April and current. There's been no change and no permits pulled.
And Mr. List is the owner of this property.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And our plan is to knock it down. But we're kind of waiting on a confirmation from the city that we can build new small bungalows right on the property. We've had it, they started working on it replat, that's what Julie asked for.
We haven't had anything submitted. What, Mr. List, could you pull up GIS, Bethany? So what Mr. List had said he wanted to do was to take this property down on 710 and that the lot just north of it that's addressed as 701, it's kind of a flag or L-shaped lot. Now can you zoom back in?
And there's surveys.
Take off the aerial so that we can see that. Yeah, so he's been informed that, so he wants to combine that sort of long skinny part of the L shape on the northern lot, he owns both of them, with this, the 710, to make it a little bit bigger, a little more buildable. And so we'd given him the information and what would be required to do that. It'll require a survey, we'll need to go through a plat process. And so he's been given that information a few weeks ago. We have not seen anything on that, so we haven't received.
So Mr. List, you own the 701 as well, Chestnut? And then that, so they're both on here.
And they want to move the boundary, but I guess you have to do a bigger thing and replat. But he's, the Han guy's been out there, he surveyed and stuff. I'm not sure where he is at the paperwork, on the paperwork.
We haven't received it.
Okay, you have anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just kind of FYI, 701 Chestnut that we're talking about is also on the demo list.
It's the next one, yeah. Proceed with it.
What we plan to tear it down?
Well, it's still on the list, so it's on the list.
Yeah, no contest.
Yeah, so do we have a consensus?
One of us will tear it down.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Proceed and.
Yes, proceed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, 701 Chestnut Street. Here's November, April. It was repainted and they began work on the roof and porch. A permit was pulled after that meeting. And here's today, you can see some work being done in that back portion and then a little bit more on this further back porch.
Does it qualify to be taken off the list?
Yeah.
The remediation agreement had replace roof, repair exterior walls and paint, remove or repair porch roofs and repair gutters and trim.
So what you're saying is pretty much it can be taken off the list.
Yeah, so, yeah, so those items have been checked off.
Yeah, it looked pretty good when I went by today.
Do we have a consensus to remove this from the demolition list?
Yeah, yes.
200 Osage Street is the accessory structure only.
Thank you.
Here is November, April, they had begun work. And they do have a permit. They are planning to bring from two stories down to one story and put on a new roof. And this is current.
Yeah, that's what I drove by today.
So.
So is this one currently on the demolition list?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we still want to, and I know he's been doing some repairs and working on it himself.
So this one, like she said, they're planning to take off that second story and make it a one-story. And they have been working on it, so that's kind of your discretion if you want to.
Give him some more time.
Give him some more time or.
Yeah, they're working, let's do it.
How are we looking at what, 36 days?
Is the foundation, is the first story, is that?
Salvageable?
Yeah, thank you.
That would be, they would need to get any required building permits. If they're gonna put on a totally new roof, that would be required. And so, you know, anything would be accounted for with that. I can't tell you if it is or not.
I mean, structurally, is the first story.
They do have a permit and it would require an inspection after it's done.
Okay, yeah.
All right, let's give him some more time.
Yeah, I'm giving him a good look at time.
Do they remain residential?
Hang 60 days.
It's an accessory structure. It's an accessory structure.
There's a house in front of it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's a garage or shed.
Yeah.
Julie, how much contact have we had, if any, with the property owner?
Um, I don't, had some, okay, so they've been, yeah, they've been in touch with the code enforcement officer on it. So 60 days, the closest, it would be an extension to August 22nd is what you would be granting.
Okay, I'm in favor of that. Do we have a consensus?
Yep, 60 days.
Extension.
August 22nd.
And 229 Osage Street. They have active building permits for the interior and exterior renovations and work's been ongoing. Here's November, April and current.
Yeah, they've been working on it.
Yeah. And this had been a previous fire structure and then sold, I believe.
They've been doing a lot of interior work, it looks like.
Yeah, so they are actively working.
It's one I lived in when I was little, yeah.
So we're looking at 60-day extension? Just for time for them to make some more progress.
So we can see it back on August 22nd.
Or does it have, I mean, is it able to be taken off the demo list now?
It's not quite at that point yet, but, yeah, it's not at that point yet.
Okay.
So we can see it back on August 22nd.
Okay, but they aren't working on it.
Yeah.
So are we good, Mr. Waters?
All good.
Okay.
And I did want to give you an update on 1030 Miami, which is one of the four that we were proceeding with demolition on. The owner had obtained the demo permit and so we removed it from our demo bid. They have not demolished it, but they do have a demolition permit.
Okay.
And so that's another case for, since the commission has authorized city to proceed on that. At some point, if we sort of determine that they're not gonna make good on getting that demo, taking care of themselves, we can go ahead and proceed as we need.
On the demo permit, how much time do you have?
They're good for, I want to say 60 days, so, yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you. Next item on the agenda, review unsafe and dangerous fire damage structure given 30-day extension and May 9th, 2023 meetings.
Speaker Hal Burdette, the Chief Building Inspector?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Yeah, this update is pretty simple. The owner has been working with staff to get a demolition permit. We just received the release for the last two utilities today. So city staff can now actually issue the permit. So he, the owner is really trying, he has a contractor lined up. And like I said, we have not been able to issue the permit yet. Planning and zoning told me they can now. So staff is recommending giving them around a 45-day extension to August 8th to see if he follows through with getting the structure torn down by that time.
Any comments, objections and support? We have a consensus to move forward with the 45-day extension?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would agree with that. Do we know what he plans to do?
Does this require a motion?
Yes, this would require a motion.
Okay.
Yep.
I move that we give a 45-day extension to 1015 Ottawa Street for whatever, for the completion of the demolition, sorry.
Good job. Second?
Second.
Yep, a motion has been seconded. I begin voting with Commissioner Leonhart.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, Resolution B 2338, setting public hearing for unsafe and dangerous fire damage structure at 707 Pawnee Street.
Once again, Mr. Burdette?
Yes, this is a new structure, this is the first time we brought this one to you. Fire damage, back in March of this year, city did receive funds. So as you know, we have to set a public hearing. And at that public hearing, we will give you an update on what the ownership plans on doing and staff recommendations. And at that public hearing, we will give you an update on what the ownership plans on doing and staff recommendations at that time. But the public hearing is set for July twenty-fifth by this resolution.
All right. Any questions or comments?
No.
If not, this also requires a motion, I entertain a motion.
We adopt Resolution number B two-three three-eight, setting July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, as the date for the public hearing regarding the unsafe structure located at seven oh seven Pawnee Street.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. To begin voting with Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
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 A motion carried, five zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider award of bid for fire department concrete driveway replacement project.
This would be Gary Burst, the fire chief?
Goodness, Commissioners. Coming before you about replacement of some concrete. I put a, had a picture in your packet that I snapped in the back. Station two and station one, you know, built in two thousand, two thousand and one, so we're talking twenty years now. And with them saw joints are, and it just happens, you know, the contractors that come out there said, you know, it just, it's twenty years old, it happens. And in those joints, and I remember Twentieth Street looking like that too before they redid it a few years back. Water in the winter time hits in there and it falls and it freezes and the concrete don't move, so it starts busting out these joints. And for the last quite a few years, we, we, you know, had public works, you know, graciously landlord, do some asphalt, then there course, and, but it's getting to the point now that just they're too big and it just, it doesn't hold up. And those aprons, so we drive around there, drive through that. A lot of times we put hose out there to wash the hose off and stuff and it's, you can just gravel stuff and it can almost be a, a, a broken ankle type of hazard or two. And some of those are pretty good size, so. We asked for our funding in the CIP for this year, last year we made the request. It was divided up over two years. And so being, it was that way when I went out for, for bid and got sent about five companies who wanted to send out to. I kind of had to kind of go backwards, okay, we already know how much amount this fiscal year. So it's, I need to know kind of a square foot or square yard price and go from there and how much we give. So, like I said, I think it went to about five companies and one of them didn't have one of the documents that was supposed to be in the packet. And so we have one, one company and they are within the, the, the amount, the amount that we have to spend. The plan would be to spend about sixty-four thousand this year, probably in the backside of station one. And then right at the first year, we could, you know, do a PO to do the other part whenever they could get to it, the contractor. We may, we may end up doing the front side of station one also before we worry about station two. And, but we want to exhaust all of the funds over the two years, so that's why it's going forward tonight.
And that's within our budgeted amount?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Sixty-four thousand for this year and the next year.
Any questions or comments?
Needs to be done.
Yeah, if not, I entertain a motion.
I move awarding this project to CAS Construction as their proposal meets the scope of work and the budgeted amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred.
I second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Leonhart?
Aye.
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 A motion carried, five zero. Thanks, Stu. Next item on the agenda, consider award of bid for twenty twenty-three pavement management project, parking lot and Seventh Street program.
Brian Faust, Public Works Director, will handle this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The item this evening is to consider bids received and a possible award of the twenty twenty-three pavement management portion, which is parking lot here at City Hall, as well as melon overlay and some concrete work on a portion of Seventh Street. Picture on the screen this evening is actually what we'll be doing here at City Hall. Doing the sidewalk around the building, doing the half of the back parking lot, including the alley. We're putting a ready deck of brick median as well as a grassy area in the parking lot. Seventh Street is melon overlay with new sidewalks and quite a bit of ADA improvements. The plans were prepared by Alfred Benish and the project was advertised for bid in eleven North Times. Bids were opened on June seventh and we had a good showing. We had five bidders that have bid the project. And if you can see in the table in your policy report, the bids were actually very close. Baker Construction was the low bid and didn't meet all bidding requirements. They have completed a number of projects for the city in the past. The city commission does generally award a contract to the low bidder if the bid is less than the engineer's estimate. In this case, actually, all five bids were less than the engineer's estimate. The two thousand and twenty-three budget does include two million for pavement management and we've included a summary of those costs. With this parking lot and Seventh Street, the estimated total for this year is one point seven eight million. We do have the twenty-four pavement management design, which we usually include in the twenty-three project year, which leaves us a little over a hundred thousand to spend on additional work for this year. And we're working with Vance Brothers, the folks that do our micro servicing, to add streets to make sure that we use all the money that was allotted for twenty twenty-three. Staff does recommend the city commission award the twenty twenty-three pavement management parking lot and Seventh Street program to Baker Construction in the amount of five hundred seventy thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
That's pretty good.
This is really needed. I mean, it's just such a tripping hazard out there in the parking lot right now. I know. Anyway, it's, it's really been needed for some time, so looking forward to having that done.
And twenty twenty-four is the one hundredth year anniversary of City Hall.
Oh, wow.
We wanted to get this done in twenty twenty-three, so it looks, it looks good for the hundred year anniversary.
That's pretty good. There's no questions or comments? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve and award the twenty twenty-three pavement management project to Baker Construction for the amount not to exceed five hundred seventy thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
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 A motion carried, five zero. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, consider award of bid for a tandem axle dump truck with spreader controls and plow attachments.
Yeah, thank you. The street department did include this tandem axle dump truck in the twenty twenty-three CIP. Our street foreman, Becky Bieber, did prepare specification and research options for purchasing the equipment. Bids were opened on May nineteenth and two vendors provided bids. A third vendor, vendor did notify us that they had bids that they were unable to submit. Two bids, one was without trade, two thirty, and the other one was two hundred and forty-three thousand. CIP did include an amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand for the replacement of the two thousand eight International Dump Truck. The two thousand eight is inoperable due to a blown engine. Trade-in value from both bidders was extremely low, roughly three thousand dollars for that truck. We have had interest from other people on that truck. And so we do recommend awarding the truck without the trade-in and then placing the truck on Purple Wave to see if we're getting better prices. So staff does recommend the city commission approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-three tandem axle dump with spreader control and plow attachment in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars to Premier Truck Group of Kansas City. And as a note, once we do place an order, they estimate three hundred and sixty-five days before we'll receive.
Wow.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I noticed, said that the, the difference between the budget and the actual cost will be made up by the reserves in the CIP sales tax fund. How is that fund doing?
So the fund's doing well. You'll get a detailed accounting of that starting next, next Tuesday night when I present the budget and then on the thirtieth. But that fund is able to accommodate this overage and we'll go into that a little more detail and I can send that to you as well.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
And I would also add, with whatever trade-in value we get on the truck, do break that number down.
Yeah.
Yep, thanks. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve a purchase of a two thousand twenty-three tandem axle dump truck with spreader controls and plow, and plow attachments for two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars from, from Premier Truck Group of Kansas City, eight zero zero one Northeast Parven Road, Kansas City, Missouri. Delivery is up to three hundred and sixty-five days once they receive the purchase order. The difference between the budget and the actual cost will be made up by the reserves in the CIP sales tax fund. Second.
A motion has been seconded. I begin voting with Commissioner Leonhart?
Aye.
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 A motion carried, five zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, I guess it's you again. Consider award a bid for sidewalk improvement project on Dakota Street, fifth to Seventh Street.
I'm also going to have Julie Hurley start off on this item. It's a little bit unique even just for a two-block sidewalk project, so Julie will start and then Brian will take the bid part of it.
Yep, so one of the things we do with our CDBG funds is we can do infrastructure projects with that money that we get. We're actually required to. We've done sewer projects, sidewalk projects, that type of thing in the past. Those projects do have to be within the defined low and moderate income area in town. And so we had a little bit of money that we needed to reallocate in our CDBG funds. And so Public Works Group was really great in working with us. They have this project pretty much queued up and ready to go. And so we were able to use the available CDG, CDBG funds that we had, that we needed to get expended to piggyback on with this project. It's a good sidewalk project in an area that we're able to serve. And so that's where part of the funding is coming from with this. As is noted in the policy report, there are a few extra steps we have to go through when we're using CDBG funds, environmental review, that type of thing. And so all of those have been completed. It slows down the project a little bit, especially for public works. I think they're ready to go, but it's all done now and we're ready to get it put in.
So these are federal funds? Yes, the long-eared bat was a requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
And then Brian, if you want to go through the bid.
Really, all I got to add is the project is designed by BG Consultants and this is on Dakota between fifth and seventh. The sidewalk will be on the south side, but with the intersections, we'll be doing all the ADA ramps, so north and south, so people have that accessibility. Went out to bid, we did receive four bids for the project. Cost construction was low and they do meet all bidding requirements. The sidewalk improvements are expected to begin later this summer, early fall, and will be completed this year. Funding is outlined, the CDBG is roughly forty-four thousand and sidewalk funds from the countywide sales tax would make up the difference at forty-six thousand. Our staff recommends the commission approve the low bid from CAS Construction in the amount of ninety thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Not on, entertain a motion.
I move that we, the city, the city commission approved the low bid submitted by CAS Construction of Eleven Worth, Kansas for the sidewalk improvements on Dakota between fifth and seventh in the amount of ninety thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
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 A motion carried, five zero. Thank you.
I'm gonna, just saying, I'm gonna have Brian just give a quick overview. I know we have three different portions of the pavement management, so just a quick refresher about what they are and then kind of when the public can start expecting to see some work on the road. So Brian, whatever you have, please.
The first component that was awarded is the surface preservation. That's basically trying to keep your good road good. And so that's a micro servicing project. City staff has actually gone through all those streets and a lot of tree trimming and pothole patching in advance of that work. That work is slated to start in August of this year. The second component of the pavement management program is melon overlay. Those are streets that are in fair condition. That was like a two-inch mill of the asphalt and a two-inch overlay. It brings those back into excellent condition. That is also expected to start in August. So there'll be a lot of work August, September, and into October of this year. And then the last one was awarded this evening. And again, things like everything starts in August, that's kind of that deadline, or anticipated start date would be August.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, amending code ordinances, section thirty-eight, illegal camping.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the police department is broadly governing by the city. Asking for you to place a notice on first consideration that updates section thirty-eight, illegal camping. If you might recall, in July of two thousand and twenty-one, the city commission passed the illegal camping ordinance. The police department as well as code enforcement were having some difficulties with our homeless population establishing encampments on public properties such as parks, under bridges, and right-of-way. And so we've been using that tool since its inception to work through some issues with that and it's been very effective for us. We've seen some challenges over the course of the last nine months to a year in which the homeless folks have evolved a little bit and they are starting to take up occupancy and establish camps on pieces of vacant property that don't have a structure on it and establishing encampments there. The current remedy for that would be through the code enforcement division. You're not allowed to do certain things relative to that. But what we are asking for you to do is consider changing the language to adopt language that would put a ten-day cap, a ten-day cap on camping on private property. This would allow parents to let kids to set up a tent in the backyard or grandparents or something like that. But it would give us the ability to provide some leverage on owners or the folks that are staying there. What we've had is tents, campers on just a vacant lot. The owners of the property, it's either one of two things, there's a little bit of indifference. It's a vacant piece of property, there are current plans, they don't visit it very often, and so they're not up to speed or up to date on what's going on there. Or a little bit of indifference. We know that, but they don't really take a lot of action to sort of help us sort of remedy the problem. And so we feel like this might be the next step in our toolbag to help us sort of provide a little bit of leverage to keep it from getting out of control, which we've had a couple of times. The other component to the change would be clarifying the ownership issue. We've had some experiences where when we're trying to work our way through and having some discussions with the folks that are occupying the property telling us that Joe Smith told me I could stay here because they own the property. And we've been given handwritten notes and those kinds of things. And so the language in the ordinance is clarifying, you know, how we make the definitive decision about who owns the property through the county records. And if they're not able to verify that, then that's what we would use to make our decisions moving forward. And so I'll, I'll read the, the two or three pieces of language that I'm asking you to consider adding. Number three defines the owner shall be individual or entity designated as the owner of the property from public records filed with Leavitt County Register of Deeds. If owner cannot be ascertained by such records, then consent is deemed invalid. This would be the stuff that we're getting from the folks. The other part of it is that the specific language would be, it shall be illegal to engage in camping on private property without the consent of the property owner. Camping on private property is only permitted for a maximum of ten days per month. Later on in the ordinance, we did add an exemption to that so that there's room to maneuver a little bit. Camping on private property for a period of more than ten days, when a special permit has been approved by the city manager or his or her designated shall be excluded from enforcement on this section. So if there's some reason that someone needs to go beyond ten days, they can ask for permission to do that and we can have the ability to, to do that. So with that, I will do my very best to answer questions that you might have for the purposes of this matter this evening for the commission.
Yeah, quick question. So if an individual decides to camp on private property and they get permission from the owner and it's a vacant lot, that'd be legal, they'll have up to ten days to be able to, to camp on that property?
Correct, if you were to pass this ordinance in this version, yes, sir. Whereas you can now do that indefinitely.
I got you.
Which has been, which has been a little bit of a hiccup for us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief, you mentioned, you said some situations have gotten out of control. Can you maybe expand on that a little bit more?
So I'll give you the best two examples that were the most recent. It was a small up in the northern part. I don't think it's important for the specific address, but we had a recent circumstance in which a, a couple homeless put a camper on a vacant piece of property. And so between myself and Julie Hurley and her staff, we had a very difficult time ascertaining ownership of the property when we were having discussions about the folks, with the folks. They were saying they had permission to be there, those are the folks that gave us the handwritten note. And then we had a series of neighbors complaining, hey, they're not allowed to be there. And so we had that particular issue. We finally worked our way through that one. We have a current situation that we have in the north part of town where some folks have. part of town, where some folks have occupied some vacant properties, and they have tents, campfires, trash, and the common things that we get complaints from the citizens about. And then one of the owners of the particular piece of property is okay with the current circumstance, or at least different, I guess, is the best way to describe that, in terms of leveraging the property owner to try and help us. And so those are some common examples that we've just had probably in the last sixty days.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm a little hazy about this, but it seems to me like camping on private property should be illegal. I mean, except, I mean, this is different than having a tent pitched in your backyard for your kids. But, I mean, putting a camper on a vacant lot in the middle of the city, this doesn't seem right to me. Seems like it should be illegal, illegal to begin with, whether they have permission or not.
So I think the best answer, ma'am, is to say that you can't do it. But the remedy takes quite a bit of time under the code enforcement, code enforcement areas, where you write the letter, and then they have the ability to abate it. And then if that doesn't happen. So adding the language to this particular ordinance gives the Police Department, who has a little bit more quicker response time to sort of remedy the problem a little sooner by applying some leverage to either the owner of the property or the folks that are staying there. And then we're trying to balance, sort of meeting the spirit of what we're trying to do, which is, yeah, grandparents and parents let their kid put a tent in the backyard for the summer versus the problems that we get associated with folks that are homeless.
Yeah. This has been a kind of a growing controversial area of law on camping issues. And it has to go with, and you'll see one of the provisions in here, that was a pass in two thousand and twenty-one, had to do with, you know, a defense is if all the homeless shelters are in place. And the reason that it can be difficult to do an absolute ban on such things is that becomes what's called a status-type crime. An example of that is it's not illegal to be a drug addict. But it is, it can be illegal to purchase drugs. Those are two different things. The Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution generally forbids penalizing somebody for status. Homelessness has been an issue that's gained recent attention in recent years, that especially if there are no homeless shelters such available, the human body still needs to sleep, as an example. And therefore punishing someone for being on the property where there are no other options for them is punishing them as their status as a homeless person rather than activity. So that's why it's been kind of a controversial issue. And that's why you see this ordinance, that there was like that exception that we put in two thousand and twenty-one for the homeless shelters being full. And that's why it becomes difficult to just ban everything completely outright without certain exceptions.
But looking at it, not necessarily from the homeless angle, which I understand, I understand that. But if, if I had a piece of property, I could, I could basically rent it out and have somebody camp on it. Two weeks, I mean, ten days is like two weeks, almost two weeks vacation. So I could, I could basically rent out my property and have somebody have, use it all summer, you know, move in and out with a trailer. You know what? I just don't understand. I'm sorry.
So we do have land use and code enforcement regulations that prohibit that. If you have a residential property, you cannot use it as a commercial camping use. Like Chief Kitchens indicated, with our code enforcement process, when we find those types of things, and we do run into that, where someone is living or staying in an RV on their property.
Right, yeah.
You don't, we don't allow that. I believe the code is you can't stay in an RV more than seventy-two hours a month on a residential property. Then we have to go through our code enforcement process of sending a letter. We have to give a certain amount of time for them to abate it. If they don't abate it, then we have to file it in court, and then that's a lengthy process. And then what we typically run into is it's incredibly difficult to prove that someone is living in an RV. And we have had some that we filed in court, and they come and say, we weren't staying in it. And so it's tricky from the code enforcement end of things to regulate it. But yeah, from a land use standpoint, camping as a campground, that I'm going to rent out my property to camp, is not an allowed use in a residential area. So we have, we have ways that we can enforce those types of things. This is just, like Chief Kitchens said, another tool to more quickly deal with some of these things that are popping up.
I'm good with that.
And this isn't really, I mean, relevant to this conversation as much, but I would like to, if we could, you know, Chief, maybe get an update, you know, in, I don't know, ten, fifteen months or something like that, just kind of see if this has been helping out at all, you know. But I'm fine with the language, so.
So I, just to make sure I was clear, I looked today, in the time since the inception of the illegal camping in two thousand and twenty-one, we've used it three times. We've cited people three times. Typically, our approach has been communication, sort of setting a deadline. Hey, you can't do this. We're going to come here in about, you know, seven days. And it's worked effectively. But at some point, you have to have the actual leverage to say, you know, it's illegal. So we certainly can do that. We study that sort of thing all the time. We certainly can do that.
Two other things. We've talked to some property owners of these subject properties. And I did receive something today from the property owner saying nobody has permission to be on our property. So we have that on file now. So if we go to that property, we will know that they don't have permission. So we're doing that. And then the other thing that we try to be mindful of is sometimes you're going to create a problem somewhere else if you solve a problem here. Now, the camper, it needs to be moved. It needs to be relocated. But, so there's a little bit of nuance in that. But I think we have already started to see a little bit of progress on that.
Okay.
Working with the property owners.
Yep. Thanks, Chief.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the affirmative defenses here is if all the local homeless shelters are full, do we know how many beds are available in the city?
We know that. I can tell you how many there are at the actual shelter, but there are other, a variety of options available that we could probably use to do that. In terms of giving you an actual number tonight, no. I can certainly get that information to you. But, you know, the times that we have had to get to the enforcement level, the three times I've talked about, we've talked about, we've contacted Ms. Agnew and said, hey, you know, what's you guys' status? Sometimes those people have stayed at the shelter and been banned for their behavior. They're not welcome back, those kinds of things. All of the decisions to take enforcement action are factual based. Here are the things that we have. Here are the facts and the information. And we would cite the person, which we've done the other three times. So that's part of our obligation is to check the C prior to an enforcement action, and we've been meeting that obligation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? This does require consensus. Do we have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Last item on the agenda, consent agenda. Commissioner Leonhart?
I move to approve claims for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, through June ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of one million, nine hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Net amount for payroll number eleven, effective June second, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-three cents. No police and fire pension.
Second.
Our motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Our motion carried, five zero. That conclude our City Commission meeting. At this time, I would like to go around the table, starting with our city manager, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, just briefly, the chief wanted me to mention that Dare Camp is going on this week, and the commission's invited to come out on Friday for a little Dare Camp cookout at the end of that event. And I believe it's going well. We haven't lost any children yet. We lost any. He's not sure. I think we end up with the same amount each day.
A lot of ground.
Other than that, the pool season, I think, I heard today that the new features for the Woman Kitty Pool, June twenty-third now is a delivery date. So those have been on order for about a year. The painting is done. It looks great. The shade structures have gotten good review, but the slide and the other feature should be here in the next two weeks. Sports leagues are going well. Splash pad's going well. So all positive to report.
Thanks, Paul. Commissioner Leonhart?
Uh, no. Well, we're missing someone tonight. It looks like John Richfire. He's not here, so hope all is well with him. And, no, I just want to wish everyone a great, great rest of the week. That's it.
You can watch it on YouTube.
I'm glad to be back. Thank you. And I hope you all are, I hope you all are glad to have me back.
Of course we are.
Commissioner Ward?
Nothing to add right now. Hope everybody has a great week.
Commissioner Bader?
I don't, I don't have anything either. Looking forward to a nice, the nice weather and a nice weekend.
I'm definitely looking forward to the Juneteenth celebration this upcoming weekend. And tomorrow, St. Vincent Clinic will be hosting a, receive a beat the heat care package along with a cool drink at Bob Doherty Park tomorrow at ten a.m. to noon. So if you know anyone that's in need of a care package, please have them come down to Bob Doherty Park tomorrow at ten a.m. And also would like to say Happy Father's Day to the fathers.
Yes.
God bless you all, and hope you all have a great weekend. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none. Meeting adjourned.